All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Willits City Council for August 12th, 2020 to order. Kathy, if you can lead us with the pledge.
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Thank you.
Councilmember Connie?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Present.
Strong?
Here.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Here.
All right, now we, due to the provisions of the Governor's executive orders and to 520, which has certain requirements of the Brown Act, and the order of the health officer of the county of Mendocino Shelter in place to minimize the spread of COVID-19, city council members will be participating by teleconference or video conference. Special meeting action. Is this a special meeting?
No, sorry, it's not. It's a regular meeting.
The regular meeting of August 12th, 2020. All right, we are now to item two, public communication. The council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard, to expedite matters, and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the council, commissions, boards, agencies will not be prohibited, however, no action shall be taken. At this point, I will ask if there is any public communication, and I've asked everybody else if you can to mute your lines. I'll come at once. Okay. All right, I guess at this point, I will move on. Of course, public communication and move on to item three, public matters. Discussion and adoption of resolution regarding the city and Willits policy on disconnection of residential water service. Jim Lance, item, is he on?
Yes, I'm here. Jim Lance, your city attorney. This is a matter that the city is required to pass, and it was actually due, I think, on April 1, and we did quite a lot of work on this in February and were ready to go, but then came the pandemic, and soon after that, the governor passed a moratorium on water disconnections. And so, we thought that this could sit on a back burner for a while. But apparently, it passed time to do it, and we need to get it done, even though the moratorium has not been lifted. And so, I'm sure you all read your packets on this. What this basically is, is a detailed law that makes it harder for public utility systems, water systems, to disconnect for non-payment of residential service, provides more protection for persons before their service is cut off. And basically, one of the key features of it is that no disconnection may take place until the customer is delinquent, and that delinquency has continued for at least 60 days. And then there are appeal periods. It cannot be shut off during an appeal period or while the customer is enrolled in an alternative payment plan. It requires certain notices to be given. By law, it has to be at least seven days before disconnection that you give a written or telephone notice. And we've changed ours to be 10 days. That's basically the advice of our water attorneys in Sacramento. They prepared a plan that we're basically following. And in addition to that 10-day notice, then 48 hours before cutoff, you must give a good faith effort to do either a telephone or in-person notice and posting on the property of your notice of disconnection. There's also provisions for giving third-party notification in the case of disconnecting service for seniors or other dependent adults. If they would designate a third party who could receive that notice on their behalf, then you give notice to that designated person. The appeal process in this calls for first, an appeal to the finance director, and that final appeal, if requested, to the city council. There's one provision I want to draw your attention to. If you could look in the actual policy. We've got agenda summary, then a resolution. Attached to the resolution is the actual policy. It says city and Willits disconnection policy, I believe. And if you could find that, it's marked Exhibit A in several pages below. On the first page of the policy, if you'll look down toward the bottom of the page and see item 2B as in void, there's a sentence there that talks about giving a payment reminder notice to the customer who's delinquent. That's something that I put in there, but it's not required. It's not required by SB 998, and I didn't realize this would just be an extra burden on staff. And I talked with our billing department, Kim, and she was very hopeful that we would just strike that sentence, and I agree with her. I think that item 2B speaks of a payment reminder should just be stricken because it just adds more burden for staff. And this is already really ramping up the efforts that your staff has to make. Apparently, there's an average of about 200 delinquent notices each month, and so now there's just new and more rigorous procedures. And so, that's my recommendation, is that you pass this resolution so we can implement this policy, but then we eliminate that one sentence I just referenced.
Jim, I have a question. So basically, it would be A and B would become the C, that in the notice, you should have that one. Is that correct?
Yeah, let me see. I wasn't looking at my screen. Let me get to it. Yeah, so the bottom of page one, we eliminate what is now lowercase b, that sentence at the very bottom. And then, you're correct, we would just renumber. The next page, G becomes D and so forth.
Okay. That was the only question I had, as far as that's exactly. Go straight to your 10-day notice. Council, I'll go. If you have any questions, open it up to the public. Suprema?
No.
All right, yeah. Madge, do you have any questions?
No, I just, I feel as though there's plenty of other notice requirements built into this, so I don't have an objection to taking out that additional one because, you know, it obviously is important for the customer to get warned, but there's several of those already built in here, and it sounds like it's going to be quite an administrative task to keep up with it all. So I'm in favor.
Thank you, Madge. Suprema, do you have any questions? Comments?
A question.
Larry, any questions or comments?
No questions.
All right, at this point, I will see if anybody from the public would like to speak onto this. Okay, hearing none, bring it back up and see if I have a motion.
This is Larry, and I'll make the motion, recommended action.
Okay, that's the question.
I'll second the motion.
That'll be with the striking in that section. All right, motion and a second. Unless there's further discussion. Kathy, the vote?
Yes, councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim. And now, item four, we have no ordinances to enact. Item five, consent calendar. Just a notice here that the council meeting minutes brought forward on the August 26 meeting for approval. And item six, informational reports. I don't see any unless he has something.
No, not at this time.
All right, item seven, commissions, agencies, and authorities. Meet us the planning commission and the Willits successor agency, and I don't see anything listed. So now we are on item eight, city manager reports and recommendations.
This is Stephanie Gerbrenzera, your city manager, and I just wanted to update. I don't have very many updates regarding COVID-19, other than we will, there is a new public health order that will be, we expect to be issued tomorrow. We did receive a red line of it today. We don't know if that has been changed any further until the final version. The one major change is that the gatherings that are allowed under protests or religious services have been reduced to from 100 persons limit to 50 persons limit. As you know, we are spiking in Mendocino County. Those, the majority of those cases seem to be happening in the Ukiah Valley area, and so we are closely watching that. The county is developing materials in Spanish, which is extremely important because this disease appears to be affecting disproportionately those in Latinx community. And so it's incredibly important that we get the message out in a bilingual manner, and just so that all residents of Mendocino County have equal access to information. We will be, any bilingual materials that are produced by the county, we will be putting out to the city of Willits residents. We have, we now have an ordinance regarding masking. We have not issued any citations, however, we have issued warnings. And that is all I have to report regarding COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess at this point, we are at item nine, department recommendations. And with item 9A, discussion and post-match and approving resolution to a contract to Laco and Associates, not to exceed amount of $75,000, provide general engineering services to city of Willits and authorize the city manager to execute contract documents.
Yeah, this is Jeremy Rocco, project manager, and Andrea Trincato, co-project manager, is also here.
Hi.
As you said, this is the renewal of Laco's on-call contract. Engineering and public works at least, and I think the other departments have been very happy with Laco's service, and we really need their help, and we really want to renew this contract. Did you have something?
Yeah. So, you know, we've, you know, we've been contracting with them since 2016. At that time, we procured their services through an RFQ process. As Jeremy said, you know, we've been very happy with the work they've been doing, and it has helped our department as well as others tremendously. They have been providing the contract to city engineer and general on call services. And just as an example, this past year, we've been down a staff member, and we've sent several, several kind of specific things their way, which has helped us. And one of those is wastewater compliance, the NPDs permit application, the biosolids reporting, and the wastewater discharge permit. We're also starting to use them for encroachment permits and some inspection on the maple pump station. So they've helped us tremendously.
Also, I just wanted to add, they recently have added, you know, license surveyors to their staff, and that's sort of been a void we've had for a little while. We have some, actually, I think, really great local surveyors, but they can't check their own maps. And Laco doesn't really do work up here, so it's nice having a licensed surveyor to call on to check surveying stuff. That's been kind of a nice addition they've had.
Andrea, Jeremy, whichever one wants to jump in. I have a, it's more of a point of clarification for the public because people look at their contract and say, why do you need this if we have an engineering department? And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but nobody on staff currently is a licensed engineer. Is that correct? And therefore...
Yes.
You guys do a lot of the same work that they would do. As you guys move towards your own certifications, that at the moment, you need a licensed engineer to review things like our water projects or building projects, kind of like I would need a licensed electrician to water my house. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we absolutely have to have a licensed engineer on staff somehow to review all of the engineering things. Not just the work that we do, but, you know, submittals and plan from the public. It's just, it's, no city can operate.
And I believe it is legal requirement, this is Stephanie Gerbrenzera, to have a stamp by someone designated as the city engineer, and Laco is our city engineer.
And I know that in the past, we've either contracted outboard or had a staff person. I just wanted to clarify to the public. All right, at this point, I'll again ask councilmembers if you have any questions or comments. If I, Madge, just raise your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that so far, the $75,000 allocated includes a lot of this being on-call to do extra kinds of things like you've just been mentioning that has been a part of their work in the past. So do they just keep track of their time, and then if it looks like we're getting close to that $75,000, they would have to come back to get any authorization if there's a specific project that just blows that budget? But in general, have they been able to provide all the kinds of services that you have requested within this budget?
Yes, right. I mean, it's slightly complicated because when it is a specific project, we bill their time to that project. So I think the actual amount billed to the on-call at the end of, you know, at the end of the year was actually quite a bit lower than the $75,000, but they did quite a bit more work than $75,000 that was billed to other projects.
Yeah, so just, it does get a little complicated because we have the contract. The contract has a not-to-exceed amount, but we also have our, like, budgeted amount in our engineering department. So just to clarify that, you know, when we have a specific item, like when Laco is working on wastewater-related activities, we fund that from wastewater specifically. What generally gets funded to the engineering department is like the city engineer's time, something that is more general and less project-specific or less fund-specific.
Yeah.
So, for example, yes, we have, we have not exceeded the contract this year, but we ended up funding to our engineering budget, which was budgeted for $70,000 this last year. We've had a total charges of $50,000. That have been sort of the general engineering portion. I hope that's clear. It's a little complicated.
Yeah, that is clear. And so, that comes out, that additional service that Laco might provide would come under that particular project as a CIP budget item. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. It would be...
Or, yeah.
...that was fun. And I also just want to take a moment to remind everyone that the engineering budget is split amongst several different funds, so it's not a direct general fund charge. It's only 10% of that $75,000 gets charged to the general fund, and the rest gets split between water, sewer, and half some sales tax.
Unless they're working on a general fund-funded project.
Yeah.
Suprema, do you have anything?
No, I was pleased that it was only a one-year contract, even though it's common place to award a contract for a longer period of time. But with our uncertainty, I think one year is a good amount of time. So I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Suprema, questions?
No questions.
Larry, any questions?
No questions.
All right. Would anybody from the public like to speak onto this? Now is your chance. Okay, hearing none, I bring it back up, and at this point, I would see if I have a motion.
I'll be happy to move the staff recommendation.
I'll second it, Larry.
Seconded by Larry. Unless there's any further discussion. Kathy, vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes.
All right, now we're moving on to item 9B, adopt a resolution awarding a contract to Mead and Hunt, rated an amount not to exceed $112,340, to provide construction support services for the construction of the Willits Airport Runway Rehabilitation Project, project number 2020-03, and authorize the city manager to execute contract and approve change orders up to a cumulative total of 10% of the total contract amount. Is this Dusty thing?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Dusty Dooley, your community development director. And let me just start off by saying I'm a little bit jealous that I don't have a work buddy to help me present this tonight, but I'll go ahead and try it out as best I can here. So again, the staff is continuing to move forward with our Willits Airport Runway Rehabilitation Project. Again, you have the overall scope of work for the project within your agenda summary, but essentially what's happening is we're, we need to bring our runway and taxiways into compliance with FAA standards so that we continue, so that we can continue to operate our airport up there in Brook Trails. Towards that goal, we need to award a contract to our longtime airport consultant, Mead and Hunt, in order to provide administrative services and some project management rules for this construction project. I do want to mention that within our grant application to the FAA, we have requested to reserve close to $19,000 to reimburse city for our actual staff time spent on this project. At this point, we did expect to have a fully executed agreement with the FAA for the funding. We don't, as of this moment in time, I was on the phone with the FAA around 3 o'clock today, and they discovered an error within their financial department that froze our application, and it was an error on their end. They apologized profusely and said that it shouldn't be an issue to get that unfrozen and off to us any day now. So hopefully, we will expect full funding for this project, which is included in our budget. But you did notice that you got a revised resolution earlier today. To make note that, you know, this project's contingent upon receiving that funding from the FAA. And so, just that extra precaution was put into the resolution for the simple fact that we don't have that agreement in place at the moment for the FAA funding. And with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Madge, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wondered if the support services, which is the first one on the agenda, is above and beyond just sort of overseeing or supervising the actual contract work, which is the amount we're funding. It just seems like it's more than 20% of the total funds. And what else are they providing for those support services?
It's more than just an admin role. They actually include, like, the material testing and, how do I describe it? It's, there's a, a lot of paperwork. There's a lot of supervision while construction is happening that has to be completed as a requirement of the FAA grant funding. I had the same question when I saw what I thought was a little bit of sticker shock on the $212,000. That number actually had to be, we had to complete an independent fee estimate, and Laco actually had familiarity with a similar project to the South, I believe in Sonoma County, and determined that the cost for the services being provided by Mead and Hunt was similar. And I'm sorry, I can't provide a little bit more detail on that question. I might be able to look at some documents while we're talking here.
Hi, this is Stephanie Gerbrenzera, city manager, and I just wanted to chime in a little bit. For contracts of this kind, when you've got construction support, you've got construction management, project management, materials testing, 20% figure is not out of the ballpark for all of those services for this type of contract because they're actually performing a range of tasks. And generally, when you're doing a contract management, you're looking for something in that range. This has a level of expertise involved in it, which leads us to a comfort level. As long as it's around 20%, we're comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Suprema, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Larry? No. Suprema?
Yeah, I believe that it was this grant that I had asked a question before about intrinsic cash flow, and wasn't this the one that you were going to give back to me with some additional information about the reimbursement on this? Was this the same project? I'm pretty sure it was.
It was.
Yeah, and with our past airport projects with FAA, the reimbursement's taken between three to eight weeks. It varies on the FAA's response time.
Okay. And so, I guess I'm just looking then for city manager, some reassurance that you feel confident that this reimbursement isn't going to impact our cash flow in any negative kind of way.
Yes, I appreciate the question because I think that's a very important question. It's actually a reason why, when I realized that we hadn't gotten the firm grant approval, I went in and changed the resolutions this morning in somewhat of a panic to make sure that everything was contingent on full approval. Since we have full approval, we are not going to approve these contracts until the FAA fully commits to full funding. Having to wait two months or three months is not a problem. I mean, they're good for it as long as they do commit to the grant amount, and that's why I wrote the contingency into the resolutions.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this point, I'll see if anybody from the public has any questions. Okay, we get back up. At this point, I'll be looking for a motion.
Did someone else already move?
Who, do I have a second?
Was that Larry or me?
I have Madge's motion.
Okay, I made the motion.
Do I have a second?
This is Suprema, I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Suprema. I have a motion to second unless there's any further discussion. Kathy called for the vote? Now, if you call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes. All right, thank you.
And so, we are on. Item C, adopted resolution awarding a contract to Team Gelati Incorporated, the amount not to exceed $957,141 for the construction of the Willets Airport Runway Rehabilitation Project, project number 2020-03, authorize city manager to execute the contract and approve construction change orders up to a cumulative total of 10% of the total contract. Well, Dusty?
Yeah, this is Dusty, the Community Development Director again, and I did get my wish. Stephanie, you made an excellent work buddy on that last item. This is a, this is a contract to award Team Gelati, the, the contract for the construction of the, of the project. It did go through a public bidding process. Within the agenda summary, you can see the two companies that bid along with the bid total. Team Gelati's bid was determined to be adequate, and staff is recommending that the council award a construction contract with Team Gelati. I will mention that the FAA does hold a 15% contingency should we have any change orders, which I understand can commonly happen with construction projects. So there is that, that precaution, and that's additional funds built into the FAA funding mechanism. Again, it's the same project, so again, if the council has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
And I'll just start off by saying that this again is similar to the other one. It's all contingent on us getting that final approval, is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, you also have a revised resolution that was completed by our city manager to be extra causes to ensure that this project is tied to receiving funding from the FAA. And again, we will not move forward with the project absent that funding.
Okay. At this point, I will see if, Sabrina, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Greta, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I think Dusty just answered my first question, which was if we need to use that 10% contingency, if it goes over budget on something specific, that that's covered by the FAA. Does, does any change order have to go through the FAA as well, or can the city go ahead with those on their own?
I, I'm, I'm not positive as to what that process is. I would have to work with the consultants and get back to you on that one.
Thank you.
Larry, do you have any questions?
Quick.
Sabrina, do you have any questions?
No questions.
I got everybody. So would anybody from the public like to comment on this? All right. Okay, I'll bring it back up to us, and I have a motion on this.
This is Sabrina, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Larry, seconded by Larry. All right. Again, unless there's any further discussion, open the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes. Glad that Karen's money came in. All right, now we are on item 10, City Council Committee Boards and Agency Reviews.
Do I have anybody that would like to speak on to this on the council? Okay? I'll listen through this thing. All right.
This is Sabrina.
Go ahead.
I just have one announcement. I serve on the Mendocino Transit Authority Board, and our executive director or general manager is chosen to move out of the area, and so MTA will be looking for a new executive director. And we, we'll be starting that process soon. Anything else to report?
Do you have any councilmembers? Madge, you got something?
Yeah, the EDFC, the Economic Development Financing Corporation, is meeting tomorrow. We appointed a interim general manager, I guess you'd call that, that person. And I know that one of the items on that agenda is to do more outreach to the various jurisdictions to see what our needs are and how EDFC can better serve all of the jurisdictions in our county. So, that'll be on tomorrow's agenda with EDFC. And they're also continuing to do quite a bit of loan activity. There have been, as you might expect, a few loans that we're having to write off because of the current economic crisis. But there are, most of those are covered by various loan insurance to a certain point, though EDFC is apparently doing okay financially. But we'll get a report on that tomorrow. And I don't believe, Solid Waste Management is not meeting this month, and Sonoma Power met last week, but I was not able to attend.
Any else? All right, I guess we went item 11, councilmember reports recommendations. Council?
Actually, I have a question. And I reached out to Kathy, so maybe Kathy can answer it. I've been receiving a lot of questions from the community about the trees that were cut down in Red Row. Are you able to give us a public update?
Yes. I contacted, I actually spoke with the city attorney, or excuse me, the city manager and with our public works superintendent, and apparently those were tagged by PG&E to take down because they interfered with the lines on Commercial Street.
Do, do we know why they cut them down purely to the stump, and did they notify the city first?
It's my understanding that yes, they did notify the city first. It sounds like it was a while back on that, and as far as how far they took them down, I'm sorry, did not get any answer on that.
I saw a report, I think it was from PG&E's arborist or somebody that, that said that they were pretty diseased or, you know, they were very compromised, and therefore, it was very likely that they would fall and damage the PG&E lines. It wasn't just that they were, you know, in that vicinity, it was that the trees were...
Correct, that's what we were worried about.
And I think, I thought all of us, councilmembers, got a copy of that a month or so ago with pictures.
Yeah. Hi, this is Stephanie Garbrandt Sierra, city manager. When we received notice, our public works department received notice from PG&E that they would be taking this action. I actually forwarded that to council, but it's been some time. It's actually more than a month that this happened, and they notified us regarding the trees, and some of them, I'm actually in their right of way, and they had an absolute right to take them, and there were safety issues in the council. I also, we also included an arborist report, and Ken had sort of offered to, to speak to councilmembers, but it's been a while, so I'm sure that he would be happy to speak to anyone who had questions about this issue, particularly members of the public. If they want to call the city, we'd be happy to talk to them about that.
Oops. I remembered one other report, and maybe Greta would like to chime in on this. My buddy here, the Ethics, Code of Ethics Ad Hoc Committee, I believe we're kind of developing a consensus among our little committee, and we probably will ask to be on the August 26th agenda to bring something up to the whole council. Greta, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay, and then one other public question is that there's been a lot of tagging on some of the businesses of, you know, graffiti, I guess you'd call it. Some of it sort of well-meaning, like saying to, "It's time," that they miss, "We miss its time," things like that, but it's, it is definitely graffiti, and it's marring a lot of the windows. And I'm just wondering, to what extent is the city responsible for dealing with those, or is it just private property owners? And, and how is that proceeding?
Hi, this is Stephanie Garbrandt Sierra, city manager. We are responsible for public property, and if private property owners are not cleaning up their premises, we can send our code enforcement officer to send letters if anyone... See, I noted that there is a citizens group, some of them Rotary members, that came out and actually cleaned a lot of private property on their own, and so I'm not aware of any remaining tagging that is present. If there is, and it's on private property, the city's role is to give warnings and then to cite any property owners that do not clean up the tagging. That is the city's role.
I saw some of these. So it's, it hasn't all been cleaned up, but on West Commercial, there's quite a few windows.
And this is Steve Allen. If I can just add that, that we are doing extra controls in both areas and other areas so that we can attempt to catch the vandals, so we're working with code enforcement on that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else like to say anything? Okay, I'll just add one thing. I know I got at least one email, and I know there's stuff on social media that has part of our letter that I sent out in our tax measure that you're looking to defund the police, and that isn't the intent, I mean, to save our city services. And so I wanted to publicly put that out there, that for our police department, and want to make sure we can continue to have law enforcement. I wanted to put that out. And we need good and welfare, I guess, for our government. All right, we do have one closed session item. Show it to Government Code 4957, we're going to have potential public and free appointment of the city manager. And at this point, we will log off, and if there's something to report, I'll, I'll report it out. All right, now? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Are we going to have like five or 10 minutes before we try to convene as closed, a closed session?
Uh, yeah, we have a few minutes.
I believe we were going to do closed sessions face-to-face at the, at the community center. This is Karen. Yeah, I'm just asking what time, 10 minutes from now or 15? What is the...
How about 15?
15, okay. Nice even number, 7:30. Okay, thank you.